I'd like everyone to remain standing for one minute, please. I'd just like to take a moment to observe, a brief moment of silence. Superintendent of school is Dr. Phil O'Jay, who passed away unexpectedly earlier today, so if you can all just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hearing us. Mrs. Berg and Will Clark, please.
Here.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Page. Just a quick note, Dr. O'Jay and Chairperson, Mrs. Page, Dr. Humbert, the Lead Principal of Stony Lane at Ferrario, the Teacher Representative of Stony Lane, are from Washington today, excepting from the Department of Education, on behalf of the school district of Stony Lane School, they're still being approved with an office. Congratulations to them once again, and I know, and I believe that in coming meeting, we'll be holding a hundred Stony Lane, and I recognize them once again, as would the Governor of Stony Lane, and also the Commissioner of Education, so we'll talk a little bit more about them in a couple of minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Page. Sorry. That speaker? Any better? Better? Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Moving into the committee's first agenda item, unfinished business is a approval of a supervisor for the weight room at the high school. What I'd like to do first, and before we open up into a discussion, is look for a motion to approve this agenda item at this time.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second, and we're going to go into any discussion the committee may have. Prior to doing that, I'd just like to quickly bring the public up to date or up to speed on where this discussion originated and how it ended up to be where it is today. Going back, and I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues on the committee as well, going back about six months ago, the committee did not approve this position as it had been previously approved. I think the overwhelming concern which I expressed, and I think most of my colleagues agreed with me, is that the position, much to the surprise of many students and then those in public, cost the school district $12,000 per school year. It's not free, it's not a volunteer, it's a $12,000 position to the athletic budget. And I don't think, myself, speaking for myself, and some of my colleagues as well, there was a real comfortable feeling for the committee to approve to pay a supervisor of the weight room $12,000 while at the same time, we were cutting funding to gymnastics, we were cutting funding to ice hockey, we were cutting school buses, we were cutting teachers, and so on and so forth. So, as I said again, this is not a free position, this is not a volunteer position, this is not a mandatory position, it's not even a position that we need to have filled in order to have the weight room open. Okay? So let me make it abundantly clear to the students, to the staff, and to the public. This committee did not vote to close your weight room. This committee did not authorize the weight room to be closed. Okay? We made it abundantly clear that the weight room was to remain open and be supervised by whether it be coaches, or gym teachers, or some adult, or some volunteer, so on and so forth. So, those who decided to close and lock the weight room, took it upon themselves to do that. So, questions, comments, concerns, should be directed to your principal, should be directed to the staff at the school. This committee, I want to say it to you again, did not vote to close your weight room. Excuse me? This committee did not vote to close your weight room. We made it abundantly clear that that was not the intent, that that was not to happen. So, again, I would direct your questions to those responsible, speak to your principals, speak to your teachers, speak to your coaches. I want to thank everyone who took the time to call and email committee members and express your concerns and bring them to our attention. Because I can assure you, myself as well as my fellow committee members, we're not aware that the weight room was closed. And I think through some discussion with the school committee and the administration, we've hopefully put a plan in place that will work. The weight room should be reopened tomorrow. Like I said, it should have never been closed in the first place. And, again, some miscommunication on part of the administration that I think we've had some discussions amongst ourselves and the school administration to rectify, and hopefully alleviate the confusion in the future. So, thank you to those who very eloquently and politely expressed yourselves through emails and phone calls. I actually had a couple of students over my house that were talking to me about this as well. So, brought some things to my attention that I was not aware of, so I appreciate that. Thank you. So, we have a motion to approve, it's been seconded. If there's no further discussion, please. Mr. Mudge?
Thank you. Unfortunately, there are a lot of bloopers that caused this issue, and I guess, administration and possibly even us were responsible to some degree, I think. But nonetheless, on our agenda, we do have student activity fund accounts, and we've been looking at the activity fund accounts, and what is an activity fund account, and what isn't, and what is a enterprise fund, and so forth. With that said, there are many activity, there is much money, some of our activity funds, that could go towards funding these things. And if they were a, an activity fund that fell under the fiduciary responsibility of the committee, then that means the kids could actually fund that out of some of these sports banks, sports funds for football, basketball, baseball, and so forth. Nonetheless, I'm not recommending that. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we fund this cost out of the enterprise fund for sports camps. That's within our purview. Enterprise funds has, I think, a $25,000 surplus in it, and I think it's appropriate that that be used to fund the retention of this function. Again, this is in compliance with both the Department of Ed regulations and the UCAR, okay, UCAR regulations, as well as Department of Ed, United States Department of Education's guidance for budgeting and financing funds. Again, I do not want to see this money come out of funds that were allocated to education. Okay? And I think this could have been a solution, it could have been in place before also, okay? But unfortunately, it didn't get to us, and unfortunately, and I apologize to students and everybody else, that what's happened was unfortunate, but there is a solution. We have it within our jurisdiction to do that, and again, I recommend that we take this out of the enterprise fund accounts and not the educational budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. If the committee doesn't mind, I'll just work my way back down the table for anyone else who has questions and comments.
No, thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Cerisi for summarizing some of the contextual stuff of this, and I know I tried to, and about the 50 or 60 folks who emailed me as well. I would just like to echo, it's actually very pleasant to see so many students who feel passionate about something to come out. I would tell you that, as Mr. Cerisi said, the function of this committee is to sort of balance scarce resources. And so, I think it's great when you give feedback to tell us stuff that is enhancing your educational experience. Conversely, I hope as we get to March, April, and May, when we make larger decisions, and then when the town council makes larger decisions about funding your educational experience, you come out as well and tell us those things that are really helping your education, and also tell us the things that really aren't helping your education. Because we can make a lot of decisions, and we're forced to make a lot of decisions, we don't often get as much feedback in terms of what's really making a difference at your level. So, thank you for coming out, but, you know, I hope it just doesn't take a sort of single issue for you to keep involved somehow, whether it's through that or your student representatives you have here. Stay involved, it's your education that we're deciding about.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else? Mrs. Abuzon, if you have one?
I guess, I, Mr. Jones and Mr. Cerisi have sort of summed up how the committee feels about this whole situation, and I, again, would like to thank everyone for coming out and expressing interest, and I'm glad that this issue is now resolved.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. And Mrs. Abuzon?
I would concur with those comments also, and I thought the emails that we received were very well-written, they were by the students, they were very respectful, they were very polite, and they advocated very well for themselves. The plan that's now been presented to this committee by the superintendent, I believe, is requiring less funding from educational monies than the previous plan.
It's the previous plan, this requires approximately half the funding that the previous plan required. So, you're looking at roughly $6,000 annual cost versus $12,000 of annual cost.
And I think that's a critical point, because it's important to understand that no other school in the state, as far as we know, we've asked, has a position like this, and funds a position like this, including Hendrickson. So, again, we're looking at taking our resources and trying to figure out what to do, and we're, we've cut a couple of sports recently, that was a very difficult decision to make. So, it's important that we look at, when we have individuals getting stipends like this, that we look at these and make sure that they're a reasonable amount of money, even if it's coming from fundraising funds, because we get letters all the time from parents, athletic parents, parents of kids that are playing sports, saying, "Look, we do a lot of fundraising, we want to make sure these are reasonable amounts that we're paying for these things, the kids work hard at this fundraising, we work hard helping them do it." So, it's up to us to be kind of the steward of that, and send the right message to the community. So, I think this committee has taken very responsible action on the matter, and it's unfortunate the way it went down, but it looks like we're, this is a good resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Abuzon. Mr. Biscotto, did you have anything?
Yeah. Well, since I'm last, I'm pretty much going to repeat what everybody else said. A lot of the emails were very well-written, I was impressed with your advocacy of somebody you find, you hold near and dear to you, and that's important. It's good that you have somebody that you can look up to and respect like that, because those folks don't come along very often in your lives, and it was very nice to see. And, again, emails are very well-written, I was very impressed with the quality of the emails that were sent to me. I didn't respond to every one of them. Honestly, when I learned that Dr. O'Jay was going to address you guys en masse at some point in some fashion, that's when I figured I didn't have to respond anymore. So, for the ones that did, thank you very much for the back and forth, I enjoyed it. I would like to ask our Director, Mrs. King, what is the, what Mr. Mudge suggested, is that something that's doable? Can we pay for this function out of, what did you say, Bill?
The enterprise fund, sports camp enterprise fund.
Is that something that we can do?
I can't say yes and I can't say no, because I do not manage the enterprise fund, Mr. Aaron Thomas does, and I think that he deserves the respect to ask him what his plans are for that fund, because he could have a piece of equipment he's thinking about, he could have uniforms that he might need next year for sports camp, there are a lot of things, and since he manages that fund, I think he deserves that respect to ask him what his plan or thinking would be from that.
If I could just interject for one second, Mrs. King and I were actually discussing that earlier, and that may be an option that we could exercise. My suggestion to the committee at this time would be to approve the recommendation that's before us this evening, and, you know, ask Mrs. King if that's an option she can look into in the meantime, and we could always come back and amend the funding source for this position, if that would be something that would be recommended by the administration or something that the committee would want to continue to discuss or pursue. So that would be my suggestion to the committee at this time. I'm sorry I interrupted you, Mr. Biscotto, and you did have the floor. If you had any additional comments or questions?
Oh, no, I'm fine. I wrapped it up.
Just really quick, Mr. Mudge?
Go ahead.
Just really quick, again, I just wanted to reiterate that this was something that the committee voted to eliminate funding for six months ago, so I think, as I said, it came as a surprise to us that the weight room was closed after it's something that we eliminated the position, funding to the position six months ago. And again, I just want to be clear, that the intent that we discussed on that night six months ago, and we discussed last week as well, was not to take something away from the high school or take something away from the students. What we clearly discussed that night was taking that $12,000 that was being paid to a supervisor of the weight room for a stipend, and use it towards another student activity or another student athlete activity, or club, or sport, or whatever it may be. What we are trying to do is take the limited money that we have and direct it to students. That's what we're trying to do. So, if we inadvertently didn't accomplish that mission, hopefully, we're rectifying that now, and we'll continue to work on these things and the communication issues. So, Mr. Mudge?
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Cerisi. Listen, I want to make a formal motion to take it out of the enterprise funds. I'm confident that, looking at our rules and regulations, that the enterprise fund, our school committee funds, period. Okay? The only funding that is not within our purview to direct the monies are fiduciary funds or student activity funds. We only hold a responsibility to ensure there is governance, proper recording, and so forth, to oversee the kids' money being raised, okay? And, again, it's a fiduciary responsibility. All other funding, whether it's co-curricular funds, curricular funds, as well as the enterprise funds, are school committee monies. And it's in every piece of literature that I have read on budgeting. So, again, had we had this conversation last March, we probably wouldn't be here today. Okay? And I did send this to the administration earlier this week, so I'm disappointed that we're not prepared, okay, to reconcile this, because I did send this in, said that I would be recommending this as a closure item, and therefore, I'm going to make a motion that this be funded out of the enterprise fund.
Mr. Mudge, there's already a motion on the table, you can certainly offer an amendment of that motion if you'd like to?
Yeah, excuse me, I meant to say, I'd like to amend it, please, to use the enterprise fund accounts.
Is there a second to Mr. Mudge's amended motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Amended motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Biscotto?
Well, Mr. Mudge, I don't disagree with the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish. However, for, I don't know how long, these accounts have been managed in a different fashion. I think for us to just arbitrarily pull the rug out from underneath these folks that have been, you know, for the most part, volunteering their time to manage this money to the best of their ability, and do what they think is best, I don't think that is the way that we should go about it. I think we should sit down with the people involved and come up with a plan together. I don't think we should just, you know, hijack this train and take it for...
Anyone else? Mrs. Clark?
Along the same lines as Mr. Biscotto, and we've actually talked about the student activity funds during the budget subcommittee meetings, and, you know, it's been realized that this is a bigger issue than anyone really was aware of. There's hundreds of accounts, and I think until all of the accounts have been recognized and maybe consolidated, and we have a plan going forward as to how those monies are going to be used, and what they're going to be spent on, I have to support Mr. Biscotto. We just can't go transferring money on a funds until we get an overall picture as to where we're going to go with all that stuff.
Gee, Cheryl, don't sound so reluctant to agree with me.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. And Mrs. Abuzon, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
I was just basically going to agree. I don't disagree with what you're talking about, Bill, but later on in this very agenda, and probably, again, we'll be talking about student activity accounts, I have some concerns and things I think we should at least talk about, and I don't feel comfortable, though, moving forward with a motion like this without speaking to Mr. Thomas about it and finding out what the money's earmarked for, and I think we need more collaboration to do something like that.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I would just sort of add to what Mr. Mudge said, is that, you know, recognition that the enterprise funds are the purview of the school committee, and so, not on this particular motion, but as we hit budget season, that I think one of the shortcomings we had last year is, while we may talk about the inflows to our enterprise funds, and we focus more on the cafeteria fund, the expenditure side on all our enterprise funds is something we should pay a little more attention to. So whether, you know, obviously, I think it's proven to give the superintendent and whoever he delegates to, you know, the chance to develop the expenditure recommendations. But I would just echo Mr. Mudge's point, that if we have these discussions in March and April on all our funds, you know, then we maybe either allocate resources from where we deem a little more appropriate, or we avoid some of these issues when we hit the fall.
Agreed.
Just one more question, and I'm obviously, it's not going to go through, but, you know, whatever the cost is, let's say it's $6,000, $7,000, what are we giving up to spend with $6,000 or $7,000?
Mrs. King, can you correct me if I'm wrong, this is something that we had already budgeted for in our original budget. We just chose not to fund this position when it came before us, this individual position when it came before us for approval. Is that correct, Mrs. King?
Correct.
Well, I'd like to see in the budget where it was, because I never saw it in the budget.
It's the stipends, the athletic budget, coaches, and...
Yeah, all the stipends are in there. Everything, same as the prior year, was budgeted. Anybody that had stipends to it, I can get you the object account number, Mr. Mudge, it was all there, just like last year.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table by Mr. Mudge, that's been seconded by Mr. Biscotto, to allocate funding from the sports camp account to fund this position. And we will vote on the amended motion.
I withdraw the motion.
Mr. Mudge has withdrawn his motion, and Mr. Biscotto, you...
I'll draw my second.
Draw a second. So, we have a main motion on the table that now stands, which was to approve this position, the supervisory position, as recommended by the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Thank you for, again, for those who took time to come out tonight, and those who took time to write and call. So, hopefully, things will be back online tomorrow, and that's something that the superintendent and the high school principal will discuss this. Thank you. Next agenda item is the CIP for fiscal year '15 Capital Improvement Program, and I'm going to defer to Mrs. King first. This was on our last agenda, I think we decided to table it at that time. Committee members had some additional questions or seeking additional information, so I believe we have some additional information available to us, and I'm going to first ask the committee that we defer to Mrs. King to just do a quick overall presentation, overview presentation on this. And for Mrs. King, I'm going to move to Mr. Biscotto, who is the committee's liaison or representative to the facilities management subcommittee. So, Mrs. King?
The CIP document that you have in front of you is, first of all, it was a joint effort between myself, our facility supervisor, Jim Partridge, who you recognize that name as being the architect on our big bond work, and Phil Bergeron. A lot of information was gathered, a lot of estimates, as best as we could get together, were gathered. And this document is intended to be something that the school committee uses, not only do we send it to the asset management committee, but it's also something for the school committee to understand where administration feels there are big outlays of cash needed for capital needs that are difficult, if not impossible, to cover in our general operating budget. So, in, just like years past, this is merely a planning tool. Your approval or agreement to send this document to asset management, there is a meeting on Thursday at 5:30 with the asset management committee, your approval for that does not mean that it's a go-ahead to spend any money. After that, if we were to move forward with anything on this document, everything needs to be vetted, there needs to be RFPs, every possible scenario needs to be looked at, and that would need final approval by the school committee. So, again, you are not approving spending of any money. You are just recognizing that these are issues that administration has brought to you. If you don't agree with something on the document, whether it be priority, whether it be cost, and again, the costs are estimates. This is a planning document. There are some places where we can get some more solid estimates, some of them you can't, because some of the bigger projects are going to require a project manager or an architect to spec it out. We can't just ask vendors to come along for, you know, a possible two or three million dollar project and say, "Hey, you know, give me an estimate." They're not going to do that until we're really ready to move forward with the project. So, it's just intended to bring out the items that we have as issues. The format, really, what I did is I did do a summary letter, and after Mr. Biscotto speaks, we can either go over that letter, however the committee wants to do it. But really, the pages all the way in the back of your document are really, it's called Town of North Kingston Capital Improvement Program request, that's really what the asset management committee wants. All the rest of it is what I added to try to help you get through the document, but they're really, they are not interested in any of the backup or the details or anything else, they just want to see what we have on those particular forms. That's how we've submitted in the past, and that's how I've been requested to submit it. But again, I do want to thank our facility supervisor, Steve Tremblay, for his hard work on this, Jim Partridge for his input, and Phil Bergeron as well.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Mr. Biscotto?
Yeah, just to reiterate what Mrs. King said, and maybe add a little bit to it, this is, you know, this is, it's a living document, this isn't anything that's cast in stone. These are, I don't know, for lack of a wish list, not so much a wish list, but a needs list, and the wishing part comes as we wish we had the money to do it. You know, but these are things that aren't necessarily nice to have, so I mean, these are, all this information's been compiled by a lot of hard-working volunteers who really impressed the hell out of me for the amount of time that they devote, and the sincerity and the seriousness with which they undertake their charge. They put a lot of time and a lot of hard work into it. I just urge everybody to remember that, you know, we're not spending a dime here, we're just proving what these experts in their particular fields have told us we're going to need to do in the next, what, five, 10 years, Mrs. King?
Five years, yeah. We try to do this as a five-year document.
So, just keep that in mind, and, you know, maybe you don't agree with the priorities, and that's fine. A lot of this stuff can be massaged around, we can talk about it and debate it, but just remember, we're not spending a dime here, we're just looking at a five-year plan on how to keep our assets...
arbitrarily pull the rug out from underneath these, these folks that have been, you know, for the most part volunteering their time to manage this money to the best of their ability and to do what they think is best. I, I don't think that is the way that we should go about it. I think we should sit down with, with the people involved and, and come up with a plan together. Um, I don't think we should just, um, you know, hijack this train and take it for, for.
Anyone else? Mrs. Clockin?
Um, along the same lines as Mr. Biscarton, we've actually talked about the student activity funds during the budget subcommittee meetings and, you know, it's been realized that this is a bigger issue than anyone really was aware of. There's hundreds of accounts and I think until, um, all of the counts have been, um, recognized and may be consolidated and we have a plan going forward as to how those monies are going to be used and what they're going to be spent on, I have to support Mr. Biscarton. We just can't go transferring money on a funds until we get an overall picture as to where we're going to go with all that stuff.
Gee, Cheryl, don't sound, don't sound so reluctant to agree with me.
Thank you, Mrs. Clockin. Mrs. Avizano, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
I was just basically going to agree. I don't disagree with what you're talking about, Bill, but later on in this very agenda and probably again, we'll be talking about student activity accounts. I have some concerns and things I think we should at least talk about and, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable though moving forward with a motion like this without speaking to Mr. Thomas about it and finding out what the money's earmarked for and I think we need more collaboration to do something like that.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Um, I, I would just sort of add to what Mr. Mudge said is that, you know, recognition that the enterprise funds are the purview of the school committee and so not on this particular motion, but as we hit budget season, that I think one of the shortcomings we had last year is while we may talk about the inflows to our enterprise funds and we focus more on the cafeteria fund, um, the expenditure side on all our enterprise funds is something we should pay a little more attention to. So whether, um, you know, obviously I think it's proven to give the superintendent and whoever he delegates to, you know, the chance to, to develop the, the expenditure recommendations. Um, but I would just echo Mr. Mudge's point that is if we have these discussions in March and April on all our funds, you know, then we maybe either allocate resources, um, from where we deem a little more appropriate or we avoid some of these issues when we hit the fall.
Agreed.
All right, just, just one more question.
Sure.
And I, I'm obviously, it's not going to go through, but you know, whatever the cost is, let's say it's six, $7,000, what are we giving up to spend with $6,000 or $7,000?
This is, uh, and Mrs. King can correct me if I'm wrong. This is something that we had already budgeted for in our original budget. We just chose not to fund this position when it came before us, um, this individual position when it came before us for approval. Is that correct, Mrs. King?
Correct.
Well, I'd like to see in the budget where it was because I never saw it in the budget.
It's the stipends, the athletic budget, coaches and...
Yeah, all, all the stipends are in there. Everything, same as the prior year was budgeted. Anybody that had stipends to it, I, I can get you the object account number, Mr. Mudge. It was all there, just like last year.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table by Mr. Mudge that's been seconded by Mr. Biscarton to allocate funding from the athle-, the, uh, sports camp account to fund this position. Um, and we will vote on the amended motion.
I withdraw the motions.
Mr. Mudge has withdrawn his motion and Mr. Biscarton?
I'll draw my second.
Draw a second. So we have a main motion on the table that now stands, which was to approve this position, the supervisory position as recommended by the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Thank you. Thank you for, again, for those who took time to come out tonight and those who took time to write and call. So hopefully things will be back online tomorrow and, uh, that's something that the superintendent and the, uh, high school principal will, will discuss this. Thank you. Next agenda item is the CIP for fiscal year 15, capital improvement program. And I'm going to defer to Mrs. King first. Um, this was on our last agenda. I think we decided to table it at that time. Um, committee members had some additional questions or seeking additional information. Um, so I believe we have some additional information available to us and I, I'm going to first ask the committee that we defer to Mrs. King to, um, just do a quick overall, uh, presentation, overview presentation on this. And for Mrs. King, I'm going to move to Mr. Biscarton, who is the committee's liaison or representative to the facilities management subcommittee. So, Mrs. King?
The CIP document that you have in front of you is, uh, first of all, it was a joint effort between myself, our facility supervisor, Jim Partridge, who you recognize that name as being the architect on our big bond work, and Phil Bergeron. Um, a lot of information was gathered, a, a lot of estimates, as best as we could get together were gathered. Um, and, and this document is intended to be something that the school committee uses. Not only do we send it to the asset management committee, but it's also something for the school committee to understand where administration feels there are big outlays of cash needed for capital needs that are difficult, if not impossible, to cover in our general operating budget. So, uh, in, just like years past, this is merely a planning tool. Your approval or agreement to send this document to asset management, there is a meeting on Thursday at 5:30 with the asset management committee, your approval for that does not mean that it's a go ahead to spend any money. After that, if we were to move forward with anything on this document, everything needs to be vetted, there needs to be RFPs, every possible scenario needs to be looked at, and that would need final approval by the school committee. So again, you are not approving spending of any money. You are just recognizing that these are issues that administration has brought to you. If you don't agree with something on the document, whether it be priority, whether it be cost, and again, the costs are estimates. This is a planning document. There are some places where we can get some more solid estimates. Some of them you can't because some of the bigger projects are going to require a, a project manager, an architect to, to spec it out. Um, we can't just ask vendors to come along for, you know, a possible two or three million dollar project and say, hey, you know, give me an estimate. They're not going to do that until we're really ready to move forward with the project. So, um, it's just intended to bring out the items that we have as issues. The, um, the format really, what I did is I did do a summary letter and after Mr. Biscarton, um, speaks, we can either go over that letter, however the committee wants to do it. Um, but really the pages all the way in the back of your document, um, are really, it's called Town of North Kingston Capital Improvement Program Request. That's really what the asset management committee wants. All the rest of it is, is what I added, uh, to try to help you get through the document, but they're really, they are not interested in any of the backup or the details or, or anything else. They just want to see what we have on those particular forms. That's how we've submitted in the past and that's how I've been requested to submit it. Uh, but again, I, I do want to thank our facility supervisor, Steve Tremblay, for his hard work on this, Jim Partridge for his input, and, uh, Phil Bergeron as well.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Mr. Biscarton?
Yeah, just, um, reiterate what, um, Ms. King said and maybe add, add a little bit to it. That this is, you know, this is, it's a living document. This isn't, um, anything that's, that's cast in stone. These are, I don't know, for lack of a wish list, not so much a wish list, but a needs list. And, and the wishing part comes as we wish we had the money to do it. You know, but th- these are things that aren't necessarily, um, nice to haves. I mean, these are, this, all this information's been compiled by a lot of hard, hardworking volunteers who, um, really impressed the hell out of me for the amount of time that they devote and, and the sincerity and the seriousness of which they, they undertake their, 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 uh, their charge. They put a lot of time, a lot of hard work into it. Um, I just urge everybody to remember that, you know, we're not spending a dime here. We're just, um, proving, proving what these experts in their particular fields have told us we're going to need to do in the next, uh, what, five, five, 10 years, Mrs. King?
Five years, yeah. We try to do this as a five-year document.
So, um, just keep that in mind and, you know, maybe you don't agree with the priorities and that's fine. Um, a lot of this stuff can be massaged around. We can talk about it and debate it. Um, but just, um, remember, we're not spending a dime here. We're just looking, we're just looking at a five-year plan on how to keep our, our, our assets in the best possible condition that we can.
And actually I am remiss for not, um, recognizing the facilities subcommittee also. This was presented to them on, uh, their meeting on October 29th and, um, they did endorse this document and Mr. Biscarton is right there. A phenomenal committee. We get a lot of support from them. I get a lot of support from them even when we're not particularly meeting. Uh, the chair was unable to attend our meeting tonight. He is in a planning commission meeting, um, but it, this is, uh, an endorsed document and, and they are a very valuable resource to the school department when it comes to these issues.
Thank you. I'll, uh, we'll work down the table, um, to start off with, uh, Mrs., actually what I'll ask for at this time and, and of course, we'll just definitely have some more comments and discussion. I'll ask for a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve?
There, a second?
Second.
Okay, let's, uh, continue on with discussion. Mrs. Avizano?
Yes, I just want to recognize, I want to recognize and thank everybody that worked on this document, Mary, um, Steve Tremblay, uh, Phil Bergeron, and, um, also the facilities subcommittee because I think it's important to keep in mind for the average person that's sitting out there that may not know, this is just a group of people that are volunteering. They spend a ton of time in these meetings. They have full-time jobs, of course, and, um, they're just, their town is important to them. The upkeep of their school buildings in the town is important to them. So they put all these hours in going to these night meetings to discuss, um, how to keep up our school facilities. And I know, and I really appreciate the work that they've done. This, I've been on this committee, oh, it feels like forever. It, it's probably been six years, oh, six years, I think. Um, and also watching and going to school committee meetings like four years before that. So it's been like a 10-year process. This is the best CIP document I have ever seen. The amount of work that went into this document is pretty amazing. It's got, it's got a priority list. Every single item on here is detailed with tons of information and we have like 100 pages in our packet on this. So I just want to recognize the amazing amount of work that went into it. Um, for the high school students that are sitting out there, the third item on our, um, list here is HVAC systems at North Kingston High School. That's very good news for you guys because it's real hot on the third floor of this building. I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know. Um, so these are things that we've needed for a while, some really important items on this list. Um, another thing I want to recognize is the, the top one on the list, facility condition assessments. You know, Mr. Mudge has brought up, like for going on 10 years now, that we need this kind of detailed analysis of, um, what our buildings need to keep us where we need to be. Um, and, and, and that's the first item here. There are a few things that I would like to see down the road that I'm going to be asking to look at, um, and I've already discussed them with Mrs. King, and that would be maybe looking at, um, possible, uh, leasing of, of buses and also other iss-, one or two other minor issues that really won't prevent me from voting for this because we can make changes to this after we vote. But I just wanted to recognize the work. Um, it's, it's a very good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Avizano. Just one quick clarification before we continue on. Um, for those of you that, um, just to, um, just to clarify when you hit, CIP is capital improvement plan and when we're talking about that, we're talking about, uh, we have our annual budget and we have a, a, another budget that's for capital improvements. Um, and those are things like school buses, heating, ventilation, roofs, boilers, computers, all things of that nature. So, so when we're talking about this budget and a CIP plan, those are the types of things, um, that are in this plan, that are in this, uh, budget. Um, lighting, plumbing, all things of that nature. So, um... Mrs. Avizano?
Sorry, I forgot to mention the sec-, the third to the last, um, on the list, I think is the turf and the, um, is a potential turf project, which we just discussed briefly at our last meeting. In my mind, that would be at the bottom below DES and the other, and the other items. Um, but as we discussed, we'd be looking at a combination of, of funding for that anyway. And again, I don't see the necessity to, to discuss it right now. I'm going to vote yes on the document. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Avizano. Mrs. Clockin?
I guess, um, first, being new to the committee, um, this is the first time I've been experiencing the, um, capital improvement plan. And I have to say that I was extremely impressed with the amount of detail that did go into this. And I think, um, you know, we should be grateful that we have these experts volunteering their time on this, um, facilities subcommittee that can, you know, in conjunction with Mary and administration, put this plan together. So, um, thank you for that. And I, I was impressed with the amount of detail that was in here. And, um, I think we should just send it along.
Thank you, Mrs. Clockin. Uh, Mr., Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I want to, uh, follow up Mrs. Avizano's comment to, uh, thanks the folks who volunteer for this. Um, thank the folks who are on the asset management committee and, and since we have a, a town council member here, um, thank you for always coming, Mr. McKay. Um, I, I would sort of make a plea, a request to the asset management committee. Um, it's tough when you sort of get a compilation of all different things together on how to prioritize that. So, you know, how does the ventilation system here at the high school rack and stack against something that the town library needs or fixing our sewers or all that? So, um, I, I would sort of make a, a request that the town council look at, um, as it gives its charge to the asset management committee, um, that maybe collectively, uh, the folks who work this can come up with a, a sort of consensus way of, of scoring all the projects. Um, so there's a common baseline in, in how we prioritize stuff. Um, I'm sure they have some method, but, uh, but to work on that. As far as this document, I, I think, again, as was pointed out, there's a few issues that I think for another day lend itself to, to talking about where we can share services or, or do we need, you know, do we need a plow? Uh, other things can be done different ways. But I would specifically, um, ask the committee as we go forward to look at pulling out technology from this document. Um, you know, the experts you need, and, and this is now reflection on the folks who are on the ass-, you know, the facility subcommittee. But I think the technology needs of the committee, while some of them are, are hardware and, and stuff, and they definitely need to be considered in context of your buildings, um, there's a lot of pedagogical stuff and stuff that I think sort of lends itself to bringing in other expertise in terms of how they affect the educational experience and how we deliver it, how we teach it, um, and how students can, can take it and, and learn outside of these buildings and, and do all kinds of stuff. And I think, you know, it's easy to cut technology because that's the kind of thing when it gets to the asset management committee doesn't rack and stack nicely against fixing sewers or putting in a boiler. And I would ask the committee that maybe we, we look in the future at pulling this out, um, and letting it make its own case, whether it's with a, a similar subcommittee or some other effort to the town council, um, sort of on its own, on its own merit. And, and if we find a way of preserving that funding, um, and letting it, like I said, sort of stand on its own and not compete against, um, specific infrastructure stuff. And somewhat in the same vein, I would say too for athletic stuff. Um, again, maybe a talk about how it fits with the town recreational program as a whole, but I think that's another area that, that maybe lends itself to some other experts in the community and within the, the school district sort of getting together and talking about, um, you know, what we need and how we can fundraise or, or generate funds to preserve those and maybe deserve their own kind of special thing. So I'd make those two kind of pleas to the committee to talk about, um, in the near future. Um, I do want to end with, with sort of saying, you know, when you look at this and, and for the students who are here, as Mrs. Avizano said, you know, it's fixing this, it's also a million dollars. And this is not trivial amounts of money. And when you add what the town needs, it becomes even more significant. And so my sort of plea to the community is that I think if this is a planning document, we as a community, and that's not only the school committee and the town council and, you know, those who, who we employ to run our municipal and, and school departments, um, and collectively, the folks in our town really need to find a way to get together and say, where, where do we really head, where are we heading with this town? You know, what is our town want, going to look like? How do we want to deliver education? How do we want to deliver municipal services? Because it's sort of easy every year to, to think about every one of these in a stovepipe and say, Wickford Middle needs another $2 million over the next few years, but maybe Wickford Middle isn't the place we're going to deliver education in five years from now. Or maybe we're going to deliver municipal services in a different way. And I think if we never have the conversation of really saying where we headed strategically as a town, we'll never get to a point of saying, let's plan for the future as well as sort of planning for always fixing stuff in the near term. So I sort of make that as a, a larger plea to, to those who, who sort of control or, or have the ability to sort of bring these people together and, and have those kinds of conversations.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Mudge?
Excuse me, I have several questions. Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, uh, I think realistically what we need to do here, and send anything you wanted to the, to the, uh, asset management commission, who by the way does a prioritization process. But what we need to do and what we haven't done before, and I'm glad Mr. Kay is here, is we need to send something to the town council this year that what we, for money that we want next year, fiscal year 15. Therefore, it's incumbent upon us to prioritize our projects so that the council knows what's our priority for fiscal year 15. It's not just a list. We just can't go and ask other people. So I, I would urge it to, to, and I am very disappointed we don't have any prioritization specifically because of that. We've mentioned that often before, is it just as a plan and go on the shelf as far as, as far as I'm concerned, and the council can, you know, put it there. They can do that. But what we need to do is identify what we want in the budget for fiscal year 15. And we should be telling that to the, to the, to the council. And I would suggest, contrary to what Mrs. Avizano said, I would take and put the North Kingston track and stadium and turf on the agenda for fiscal year 15. Because it's, one of the reasons I do that is because it's going to be a self-sustained, self-paying project ultimately. We're going to save money on that. I would ask, for example, more information. We've been, you know, we've been on this high school project for 10 years, which I identified. Finally, we're getting some action on that. And we had an engineering study that was supposed to be concluded and I'm not sure where that is. And, and again, I ask that because if, if it's available, then should we have that on the budget for next year? We've got to give a positive, a positive endorsement to the, to the, to the, to the town council on where we stay. Uh, with respect to the, the, uh, facility condition assessment, we certainly need something, but that does not fall under. Unfortunately, the capital, the, the terms of what a, the capital investment plan is about, this is a planning document. The other is for fixing and three-year life cycles. It's a criteria you have to meet. So in fact, that's a separate, that doesn't, that, that should be coming out of our budget, or unless we get some additional money from the council. But that is not, if you look at the regulations for the, the capital investments, that, that doesn't fall in there. I would ask, why do we have a million dollars in for asbestos replacement for DMS when that was supposed to be corrected in the, in the bond that we just did? I mean, we had the money in the bond and now we need a million dollars to replace the asbestos? We never knew it was being taken out. At least I didn't. And now we're asking, and it could be deferred until fiscal year 18? Uh, anyway, I, I think that as a, as a, as a committee, we, it's incumbent upon us to, you know, we can't put a hundred things in the wishing well. We've got to give them something for 15 anyway. Beyond that, you know, it's sort of the issue. So...
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Mr. Biscarton, I'm going to let you wrap up as our representative to, uh, facilities subcommittee.
Okay, well, I just, um, first I want to thank everybody for, um, for being so, so positive about this. I know Mrs. King's put a lot of time in on this, um, more time than I'm sure she would even care to admit. And again, everybody on that facilities subcommittee who work equally hard and they're a great bunch of, uh, of, of guys, they're all residents in North Kingston. They're all, you know, experts in their field and they really, um, impressed the hell out of me with how much time and effort and, and detail they put into this. Um, to, to, Mr. Mudge, to your, um, one question about, um, kind of a prioritization. On page, actually on page 80 of the, of the packet, I know the packet's pretty big. It's, it was easy to overlook. There is pretty much a, there's a project description, uh, funding source, estimated cost and estimated timeframe. So Mrs. King kind of did put that together, maybe not in the, in the, um, in the fashion that maybe you would like to see one through 15, but it is there. Estimated timeframe from ASAP to, um, FY16 through FY20. So, um, it's there.
Well, page that again, John, I might have missed that. You're right.
Page 80.
Page 80 of the packet.
Summary.
It says, "The North Kingston School Department Summary of Capital Improvement Program Projects, 15 through 20."
I think you might have been reading from it, Bill, because you were reading the years.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Biscarton. Yeah, just to reiterate, I mean, we, we have this discussion on the CIP. It seems like every year as far as prioritizing or, uh, wha-, wha- what our priorities are and having priorities by year. Again, as I've said last year, and I, I think I, I think I outline it again every year. It, it's in the CIP beginning on page 80. And then if you go school by school after that, it breaks it down by each building and by each fiscal year, um, starting in 2014, what is, uh, a priority for each school in each fiscal year, each project, each estimated cost of the project for every year, starting in 2014, going all the way to 2020. So, you know, we can't send a mixed message or a mixed signal here that we're just putting a whole bunch of things in a pot and, and not prioritizing them and just saying, these are 100 things we wish to get done in the next five years and we really don't have a priority list. We do have a priority list. Each school, starting in 2014, has each individual item listed out with the expenditure estimate. Each school, each year. Breaks it down year by year, school by school. So please, let's not convey an inaccurate message to, uh, council colleagues as well as the community.
Well, I, I, I'd like to know which ones are our priority one items.
Mr. Mudge, if it's in, if it's in year 2014, right, and not in year 2020, that would lead you to believe that it's a priority. If something's listed in year 2017, then it's not so much of a priority as the things that are listed in 2014.
The priorities are basically the order of the list. So you have the assessments, you have the boiler replacements, you have the HVAC systems, and you have the, the vehicle equipment needs because of buses. So they're pretty much in that order. And, and there could be, Mr. Mudge, a couple that are maybe a, a two or a three, but the order of that page 80 is, is administration's recommended relative order of importance, if you will. I mean, it's all important. I don't want anybody to think it's not. It's all important, but this is kind of the pecking order that if we needed $10 million and we got a million, we should consider doing the top items.
And again, each, each facility is broken down by year. So if it's something that's listed in 2014, obviously it's much more of a priority than something that's listed in 2020. So again, it is a prioritized list, year by year facility by...
But Larry, what I'm saying is we've got a lot of projects in 2015 in here. Don't we have a priority for the projects for 2014?
Mrs. King just covered that.
Okay, what, yeah, but again, I guess they're all over the...
Yes, so in 2015, I know that we are going to have to replace the boiler at Fischinkova Elementary School. Absolutely no question, we are going to have to do that this summer.
Mr. Spacy, all I'm trying to say is to simplify this. If we had this over here, you know, I would be able to, to put this together myself. But, you know, there are many priorities now for 2014. Is that correct?
No, actually it really isn't. I mean, we, you, you put these things in an order and, and yes, the, the boilers, that has to get done. And, and I'm recommending that that comes out of school fund balance. Um, the recommissioning of the HVAC system at the high school, you know, that is a, a, an estimate, but yes, we're going to have to do something on that quickly. I don't know how much that's going to cost. Maybe we can phase it in. Maybe are things we do in FY15 that are a couple hundred or whatnot. So really, if you don't know how much money you have, you know, these, this is the order. And we don't know how much money you have to spend or not spend.
Could you answer me just one thing clearly, because I'm going through the list. What pro-, what's the value of the projects? What's the value of the projects we put in for 2014, 2015? It's well over a million dollars.
It probably is.
Well, then, which ones do we want to send as a top priority to the council?
The boiler for Fish and Cove could be number one.
Well, again, that's the type of discussion we need, you know, we need to have. We have buses in here.
It's, Mr. Mudge, it's right there, it's right on page 80.
All I'm saying is, why, I don't have page 80, I guess. I have what was in the packet. All I'm saying is, what are our, what?
We all have page 80, you can have my page 80 if you'd like.
What are the top 10? What are our top priorities for this year?
It's no different than if you were doing work, is it just the bigger picture as if you were doing work on your own?
Oh, well, excuse me, but there wasn't any priorities on the damn page, Larry, look at it.
In order, though.
Well, how do I know that? And it, Linda, it isn't in order with what's in the backup pages over here. If you look at the backup pages.
I think we're going to have to agree to disagree on this. I think that the rest of the committee members.
If you look at all the individual pages over here for each project.
It's in order. The years, the years at the top.
No, no, no.
Mr. Mudge, excuse me.
Sum them up, they're not in order.
Okay, let's agree to disagree, and we'll move on. I think the rest of the committee agrees with that we do have a priority list here, year by year, school by school.
Okay, just answer me one question, please. What's the total amount for 2014? What is the total amount for 2014 we're sending to the Town Council?
We're not sending it to the Town Council.
For 2014, this is a planning document.
I know it.
Five years out, and if you take each project, you've got $80,000, you've got $200,000, you've got $50,000.
Keep going.
So you added it up, Mr. Mudge, you said it was a million dollars.
Hundred thousand.
It's a million dollars.
Four hundred thousand.
Whether or not we get to all of those things.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, wait again, excuse me.
Mr. Mudge.
Which ones are we going to send to the Town Council as our priority?
Mr. Mudge, thank you. We're sending this whole package as we do every year, and you disagree with this process as you do every year, and that is perfectly fine. I'm sorry if you're not understanding the process or the document. We have a motion on the table to approve, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to one. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, Mr. Jones, I don't know if you wanted to start with the Budget Subcommittee or the Student Activity Accounts, but I will defer to you if you want to start off with those at this time, one of those.
Yeah, I, not to short-circuit this, I'm just actually appreciative that we still have some students hanging through. So if you're here to comment, we'll try and work through some of this quickly so you get a chance to do it before it gets too late. So, thank you, Mr. Cerisi. The Budget Subcommittee, which is Mr. Mudge, Mrs. Clarkin, myself, I acknowledge Mr. McKay from the Town Council comes as a liaison, and a few other. So what we want to do tonight is real quickly just tee up a couple things. This is really about sort of informing the larger committee of some of the work, getting some feedback from the larger committee. We've had some discussions with the administration, especially Mrs. King. It's something, though, we need to engage more with the administration, and I think it'd be helpful at this point to get sort of feedback from the committee as we go forward with the administration. So the first thing, and this was sent earlier, is simply an initiative from the Subcommittee which simply deals with one of our charters, which is sort of how can we create what we like to call maybe a more user-friendly way of some of this data. So I don't want to get into it too long. You know, we sent two working samples of what things we might have on a webpage and things we might do to sort of list on a typical school, some of the information that we think might present the data in a simpler matter, not only for the budget process but for community members. You know, if they're interested in about one school, how they can pull it up. So the intent, again, is not to get into a lengthy discussion about this, but just to let the committee know that this is an initiative we started and to get feedback from the committee whether this is something we should keep pursuing as we work it with the administration. I would say that one of the intent was not to create additional work in terms of new data. However, I think it is wrapped up in a larger discussion that we haven't talked about fully, but clearly improving our web presence in some things is going to need some resourcing or some discussion of how we can deliver that service. So I don't want to say this won't require a lot of new work, but in terms of some of the data presentation, it's not asking for new stuff to be generated. So I think, you know, we sent around the copy the other day, so I would ask either my fellow Subcommittee members if they've got stuff to add on this, or then get feedback from the other committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just will, once again, work down the table for any questions or comments. Just very quickly, start off by saying, the sample document that you had sent out to us that we have in our places this evening, I personally like it very much. I think it's a very simple format, a very simple document to follow, and as you, I believe the term you used is kind of like a one-stop shopping on our website, school district website, to kind of click on these areas and get into these individual documents that fall into these areas. You know, I think the average person out there is not going to dive into a 200-page budget to find something they may be looking for, but I think if they come to one page where they can click on that specific topic that they're looking for and get into just that topic, they certainly would do that, hopefully, it'd be more user-friendly. I think, as you said, it's not a matter of creating more work or more documents, it's taking our existing documents and basically repackaging them. And I know that our administration office as well as our technology office, we've kind of stretched our resources there as far as staff goes. And as you've said many times, and I do agree with you, I think, you know, it's something that the committee, we need to have more of a discussion about in, you know, I'd say in the upcoming month, no further away than the upcoming month, about talking about whether we, you know, willing to spend some extra money to bring in a consultant or bring in a contractor or some additional resources to work along with the folks in the administration office and the technology office to kind of get us jump-started on implementing these things. So thank you very much, and I just want to make sure that this and these other things is not something that we as a committee let fall by the wayside and that we do dive into it during the holiday season. So I'll just work my way down the table for any questions, comments. To Ms. Mazzone?
Actually, similar comments to Mr. Cerisi's. Thank you for this to the Budget Subcommittee. I think this is a real nice summary. I know Mary probably turned pale, but it's not that she's compiling new data, but.
Sorry to say, I was unable to look at it. I did get it from Mr. Jones last night. I tried to look at it, and I didn't get a chance to. So, and I'm sure that it is a good document, definitely something we can work with.
It is, and it's.
wasting your time on that CIP document.
Yeah, that CIP must have taken your attention.
How dare you!
This is all information we already have in different places, as was pointed out, and I would definitely concur with what we said in terms of technology resources being more than kind of stretched. Over the past six years on this committee, we have cut deeply into technology, and we've had a lot of complaints about that, actually, cut a lot of staff in that area, so that may be something we will have to look at as we step it up with our websites, but it might pay off in the end, as you talked about, Mr. Jones, with some alternative learning and other things may dovetail with that. So thank you for these, for the time and work you put into this. I think this will be helpful for the average person going on a website to get everything right there at their fingertips.
Step back for one second to Mr. Biscotti.
Thanks, Mr. Cerisi. Yeah, I have to concur. You guys did a great job on the documents. I think they're easy to read, you know, they're not confusing. You know, if I can, you know, I judge it, if I can pick it up in a few seconds, I can, you know, I can decipher and make heads of tails, but I think, you know, majority of people will be able to do the same. I just would request, just one request, if we are going to go to the outside of, for web development, let's stay away from CGI Federal if we could.
I like the kneecap of each school. It's a good thought.
Mrs. Clarkin, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I think that this is a nice model, it's a great start. We really tried to take into consideration different needs of different people looking for information, starting with just a very user-friendly format so that you could easily, quickly look and determine what information you needed, but for those who wanted more information, you can dig deeper into it. So the layers are there for as much information as one wants to gather from this website.
Thank you, Mrs. Clarkin. Mr. Mudge?
Just going to make one comment. CIP projects were seven, seven projects, seven projects at 1.5.
Mr. Mudge, Mr. Mudge, we are on the Budget Subcommittee's recommendations at this time. Do you have any questions or comments on the document that Mr. Jones just presented to the committee?
Probably, we're probably going to expand, obviously. This is just a work in progress as we get, as we go along to, you know, to add things and take things off, and anybody else that has any inputs ought to address them on there.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Anyone else? Mrs. Clarkin?
I just want to add, I want to thank Mr. Jones because he really spent the time to put this format together. We gave some input as to different types of information we want to see and maybe some format changes, but he really spearheaded the initial projected document that you have in front of you, so thank you, Mr. Jones, for your effort in that.
I knew that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I appreciate this, and I do recognize, as Mr. Mudge said and as Mr. Jones said, as well, it's just kind of like a starting overview and kind of like a one-stop shopping page here, so.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks to the committee members, and like I said, you know, this is a working draft. As Mrs. King said, you know, we, she's, I have a lot of other stuff on her plate, you know, and so if you have comments, and obviously, this is something we need to work with the administration to get their feedback. I would also add that, you know, this is, in addition to sort of financial transparency and stuff, I view this as a marketing document, too. You know, folks thinking about moving into the community or something, you know, if they can get, you know, a simple thing on one page to see how our schools, you know, I know we spend a lot of time working issues on how to improve stuff, or how to fix stuff, or stuff that comes up. I don't think we spend enough time marketing our schools for all the good things they do. And, you know, so putting on the state stuff to show how we really compare favorably against the state averages and a lot of stuff, so. And like I said, if the committee members have more stuff and as we work with the administration and others, I think we'll report back, and I think the consensus is to keep moving forward on this.
Absolutely.
So the other, the second part is an issue that the committee asked us to start looking into, and again, all this is sort of to set the table for a larger discussion. This is something that, again, we need to sort of sit down with the administration and start hammering out in more specifics, but again, it was sort of to give the full committee a chance to sort of get a sense of what initially we've done and to get feedback on where to proceed. The document I handed out, and I think everyone has a copy, but if they don't, there's one extra one, just provides sort of an overview of the activity accounts. And just to sort of set the stage, you know, the activity accounts, and this was fiscal year 13 data, although I thank Mrs. King, she provided fiscal year 11, 12, and 13, and obviously, working with the principals and others, you know, three years' worth of detail from all the schools. So we really appreciate the data effort that we got from the administration in working this. But just to start, you can see, you know, in last year, we're talking about over three-quarters of a million dollars. So this is not sort of trivial amounts we're talking about in total. And one of the things is following up on the 2009 audit was to start taking a look at, you know, some of the recommendations that were there and how we're doing and continual ways we can keep working this. Ultimately, most of these accounts are for students, by students, and our responsibility in that regard. I think a couple of the overview comments you can see from this document is, there's 363 as of the close of fiscal year 13 accounts. And we can sort of debate whether that's a large or small number, but to give a perspective, one of the things we did, you know, you see at the bottom, is how many accounts had no activity, and it's close to 40 percent, so.
Can I just clarify that there's one checking account per school?
Yes, thank you.
There are sub-accounts, so every single time there's a different fundraiser, there's another account, but there is one checking account per school.
Right.
I don't want anybody to say, "Oh, my God, we have 363 checking accounts."
Yes, that would definitely be a, and that, yes, thank you, Mrs. King, that's a good point, as we talk about the negative balance accounts. We don't want to think that we're running a bunch of balanced accounts here. But I, and we didn't fully capture probably another, that's 40 percent, probably another 15 percent that we're talking about, less than $100, with maybe only very minimal activity. And I think it sort of suggests that, like anything, you know, when folks get busy, it's easy to sort of start something, it's harder to come back and, you know, close out when we realize that the sponsors left or the activity isn't as relevant. And so to put that in perspective, you know, the upper one talks, you can see sort of, again, the flows. One of the things we sort of looked at was how many accounts had negative balances at the start and had negative balances at the end. And again, as Mrs. King points out, that doesn't mean the overall account is running a deficit. These are sub-accounts that are kept within the larger overall account. But I do think, you know, running, you know, 12 percent in fiscal year 13 may be an anomaly, but, you know, with a 91 percent increase in negative accounts sort of suggests that it's somewhat problematic that sometimes we spend ahead of knowing that either the fundraising's been there or something else, and since the larger account is, obviously, has money, it's easy to do that. And so, you know, the Subcommittee got into a lot of more specific details, and I really, I don't think this is the time or place to get into some of those specifics. But what I would look for feedback from the larger committee is, you know, the number one thing we just talked about is we as a committee have no policy on these. The administration, in working with the district leadership, has a procedural manual. I think it may be appropriate for the committee to talk about sort of setting up a larger policy guidance and then working with the administration and other stakeholders to update their procedures, to sort of put things in place about, you know, having procedures that ensure that we don't run continual negative accounts, that we close accounts that are sub-accounts that are, you know, no longer the sponsors present, and just some of those other small things that keep going, and maybe have some discussions about best practices and what, you know, the principals, who are the primary folks responsible for these, are their overall management, you know, are learning. One of the things we looked about, obviously, is there's a great variation in fees and other stuff, so, you know, can it sort of bring together a discussion about some best practices or things that the principals have found out about optimizing the value we get from these accounts? So again, it was sort of to just set the table of where we're going, and I think, you know, to ask the committee that, I think there's enough here to start talking about, you know, working a policy and then engaging the district administration and leadership about this overall area, and with the sort of related point of enterprise funds. And I'll turn to my Subcommittee members if they want to add stuff, and then let Mr. Cerisi move from there, and obviously, Mrs. King as well.
Go ahead.
I'll start off with Mr. Mudge.
Yeah, I, you know, Cheryl was going to say, I mean, yeah, bottom line is, we have some, I think, pretty serious problems here with these funds. I don't believe we're following guidance from, and I'm not faulting anybody here either, by the way, because I think this has been. because I think this has been, went on too long. But we're not following DOE guidance, YOCA programs and identifying what's an activity, what's a student activity, who has responsibility for oversight and so forth. And certainly, I think YOCA, after looking at it, is basically in, in, in hominem, if you may, with the United States Department of Education guidance on handling student activity funds, curricular funds, and extracurricular funding here. And it's very important we get that straight because we do have fiduciary responsibilities in some areas only, and then we have managerial responsibilities with others. And we really have a co-mangled mess of things. And one thing we need to do also in, in, in part of this, and it's in the DOE guidance, the Department of Ed, the United States Department of Education guidance, we've got to, we've got to really come up with a policy, I think Bob addressed it, on donations and what is considered a donation and who's responsible for the donations. I think we need to bring that in line with the, a lot of the other things and to the extent that, you know, when we meet again, I'm gonna recommend that we, we take the guidance from the Department of, the United States Department of Education, which is, I call the Green Book, as well as the YOCA and basically task the, Mrs. King unfortunately, and if she needs some help, she should get it, to, to look at this and creating a policy for the district based on the government and state guidance for these funds.
Mr. Mudge, the procedures that we do have are, are based on that as well. There are also some best practice information that, Mr. Jones, I'm not sure if I sent you that or not. There are some best practice in, primarily some Massachusetts. Rhode Island RIDE does not have a specific policy for these, but the Department of Education regulations have been used. There are IRS regulations that were also used in our procedures and also some other best practices that we've been able to find. So I would say that our procedures are a very good start for you to make your, your own policy.
Yeah, well, see, I, I'm really concerned about that because, you know, it's, it's not just one thing. For example, it's assigning people. It's, for example, the school committee, the school committee is responsible for establishing the activity itself. The superintendent doesn't have that role. So there's a whole host of things that we have to, we have to address here, as well as, as I said earlier, the enterprise fund. Those are controlled by, are supervised by, and by the, by the committee. And, and I would disagree with you that we're in compliance with those.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. I kind of would go back to what I think Mr. Jones had mentioned, is the budget subcommittee working with the policy subcommittee and moving forward with some recommendations from the budget subcommittee and the policy subcommittee and, and develop policy around this, which is basically, one of our two main tasks is policy and budget. So we can certainly take those recommendations from budget and the policy subcommittees and put them into policy, which the school district, the school committee does have the authority to implement. And so, I didn't know, Mrs. Clark?
No, like Mr. Jones said, this is the beginning of, in opening up a conversation to figure out how we create a policy, how we possibly consolidate some of these accounts and just have a better accounting and just wrap our hands around what is the best process moving forward, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. And Mrs. Avizano?
Yes, sir. Just briefly, I, I kind of view this as part two of the audit, to be honest, because there's a lot going on back then that we were trying to deal with and we resolved a lot of those issues, but this is a piece that didn't get looked at and that is looking at those procedures, which I think will be close to what we end up passing as a policy, is my guess. So I would suggest that the subcommittee and the policy subcommittee start with those procedures and craft the policy around those. I spoke to Mrs. King about this and I think one of the problems is that we are probably going to need some Munis software to do this the right way. There, it's, it's almost impossible for, to add all of this governance of all these accounts onto what we're already doing as a school department. It's like a whole separate animal. So we may have to have some expenditure there. It's, it's an expensive software, but it's, it keeps track a lot better of what's going on. In terms of donations, we have an extensive donations policy that we worked on. Kim and I were, went over that a hundred times. And I think the problem is the accounts that we have just fiduciary duty over, we don't get to decide how those funds are spent because they're fundraised monies, but we do have the fiduciary responsibility. And so we, we would have to say no if the donation's improper or it does something we don't agree with.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think that we need to decide what, how we want to have our culture in regard to that. And then, moving forward, we can maybe give some guidance on breast, on the practices that we want to look at putting in place for that. And maybe we'll review the donations policy as well as part of this.
Thank you, Mrs. Avizano. Mr. Viscotta, did you have anything?
Yeah, just, just briefly, did I hear right? Mrs. King, you said RIDE doesn't have any, they don't have any kind of overseeing document for us to follow when it comes to managing these funds?
They don't, not, not that I'm aware of, and I have spoken to our controller about it. I believe it's something that has been discussed, but there is no formal guidance from RIDE on how these should be handled.
That's, actually, that's, you know, it's, in a way, it's, it's not good, but in a way, it gives us an opportunity to, to, to be a leader in the state when it comes to developing a process and to handle, you know, geez, almost a million dollars' worth of money here. We can, you know, you can leverage your, your knowledge and your connections with other school departments, Mr. Jones, and we can take the best, best practices from the state of Massachusetts, kind of, you know, formulate our own game plan in conjunction with, you know, policy. We can, we can make a nice, you know, a nice presentation on how, how these funds can be handled and maybe it could be a, you know, a bellwether for the rest of the state to follow. So that's great, it's a good opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Viscotta. Let me just quickly say that, as I mentioned, that some of our previous committee meetings where we've had these discussions regarding this topic. Big picture concern for me has been that when we talk about these accounts and these funds, we're largely talking about funds that were generated through student fundraisers, donations from the community, donations to parents, students, businesses, students, you know, whether it be door-to-door or whether it be a bake sale or whatnot. So these are funds that our students and parents and community have raised for one, whether it be for a specific reason or a general reason. But my concern with these funds and these accounts has always been that it's the work of a lot of parents, a lot of students in our community to raise these funds. I don't feel as though any one person should have the authority, whether it be a principal, a teacher, whether it be me, to decide to write a check and exactly what they're gonna use this money for at their own discretion. I think that's a decision that I said previously should be made by each school that raises the funds for their school, for their activities, for their purposes. And it can simply be done in the school, individual school's monthly PTO meeting or SIT meeting, SAC meeting, whatever, whatever it's called, where, you know, you've got parent representatives involved, student representatives involved, teacher representatives involved, where they can discuss some of the things they'd like to use this fund money for, to purchase. And kind of get a consensus from the group or a vote from the group, how they're gonna go ahead and, and spend this funding that the students have worked hard to raise. Again, I don't think it's appropriate for whether it be me or a parent or a principal to decide, okay, you know, these kids last year or this year did all this work and raised this money and I'm gonna write out a check because I think we need this. You know, I'm gonna purchase this because I think we need this. I think that's a decision that should be made by the school and student body and other people should be involved in that process. That's something that I hope we can incorporate, whether it be through policy or procedure, but again, I would just like to see us address that. So if we, that brings us to our last agenda topic. And from there, we have citizens' comments. We have a speaker sign-up sheet that's going around and the first person is, and I apologize if I butchered the name, Bruce? Bruce Coppola? Coppola? Bruce? No? Vincent? Wajiri?
Yep. Thank you. My name is Vincent Wajiri and I'm here in regards of Jay Shabo. We know that you are here to help us and that you're not against us, obviously. And I realize that funds are short, but it is not the weight room that is our biggest concern. It is in keeping Jay Shabo that is in our concern. I do not know if most of you on the committee know Jay Shabo personally, but throughout my high school career, I gradually got to know him. And because I had the opportunity to come to the weight room four out of the five days of the week after school as a freshman, sophomore, and junior, he is the most motivational and inspirational person I know and probably will ever know. I do not know if, that none of you on this committee go in and observe or have been to the weight room, and it disappoints me that you are not funding something that you do not even know much about. During my freshman year, I still recall my experience with Mr. Shabo. I was in the weight room after school one day and I saw a junior come into the weight room. I will not say his name, but he was very overweight and, but very strong. I assumed we had come in, he had come in just to work out, but 10 minutes later, I saw him doing a cardio workout that I never thought he would be capable of doing. Next to him was Mr. Shabo motivating him to keep going. And although the last thing he wanted to do was push for more, Mr. Shabo got him through. Afterward, he thanked Mr. Shabo in tears and told him that Mr. Shabo motivated him to lose 70 pounds within a month's worth of time. And at that moment, I was inspired to accomplish any challenge that approached me and it motivated, motivated me to see that man every week of my life for the next three years. I do not care about the money, none of us care about the money, although we do realize that you have a lot on your shoulders to handle. If I or any of these students in this room who know Jay Shabo would choose keeping Shabo in the weight room after school if it meant taking funds out of all sports that engage us, there must be an alternative to this conflict. And I know that even if we use funds or fundraise, we can do it.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you for sharing that with us. Keller Coleman? I'm, I'm sorry.
Kellen.
What is it?
Kellen.
Sorry, I'm a little tired.
Sorry.
First off, I just want to say thank you to everyone here for, I know you guys are supporting us. Mr. Sreasi, I emailed you and you were very nice to me. I appreciate that. One of the first things I wanted to say that Vincent said too, was that we, we understand that there's a lot on the budget and it's, it's hard to cut anything. But I think, like Vincent also said, a lot of us here, I'm speaking on behalf of me and my students that are still here and the students that left, everyone in the school, yes, we're here more for Shabo than we are for the weight room, I would say. Because like Vincent said, Shabo is, he's, he is one of the most inspirational men I've, I've ever met in my life. And I just wanted to say, or I wanted to clarify, I guess, for myself and for, I think, other students out here. I know you guys didn't vote to take away the weight room, but I guess what my, my question is, is that for students, A, that may, may not play sports or out-of-season athletes, you know, that aren't in their, in their season, what's the plan for that? I know that personally, and I've heard it from other students, it's, Shabo is one of the most educated men I've ever met, also with regards to weights and training and that kind of stuff. So I guess I was wondering that it could, in my personal view, it could become a, a health hazard, you know what I mean? If we're, if we don't have someone in there that's completely, I know someone would volunteer their time and whatnot. But I guess my question is, with regards to that, how, what's the plan for someone to man the weight rooms?
The, the plan that we, the superintendent recommended to the committee that we voted to approve earlier this evening is to fund the position that we were, that we had previously voted not to fund. So the weight room supervisor, coach, that position is funded. I assume it's Mr. Shabo that's in that position. That's not, that's something that we, that's a principal superintendent discussion to, for them to have. But we have, the vote that we took earlier was to fund that position. So as far as the committee's concerned, the position has been funded. I believe it was Mr. Shabo that was in front of us for approval on that position prior. So I, I think our feeling are, is that we, as we've said previously, the weight room will remain open. The position will be, will be funded.
All right, yeah, I was just clarifying.
Yep.
I just quickly, I spoke to the superintendent about potentially, at some point down the road, considering whether we could use, whether we could have electives related to weightlifting for the students that don't actually play sports. Maybe they would like, because I feel like that's an asset of the whole school, not just the athletes. You know, every, everyone could, as you suggested, like a health and fitness thing, and I don't know if they're gonna consider that, but I did mention that to him.
We have, we have an elective right now. It's called Fit for Life. It's a, it's not taken by, I guess you could say, many people, but it is an elective. I'm in it. I know my friends back here, Vincent and, and James and Isabella, they're all in it. And it's, it's, we use the weight room as, it's not a replacement gym, but it's an, an extra-
Supplement.
Yes, supplement, thank you. And we, we use the weight room and Shabo is our teacher. And then we also go outside and do other things. But I think that's a great idea for the future, to keep pushing that, I would say.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Connor Pine? Connor Pine, it looks like?
Connor, before I reinstate everything that's just been said, I have the same point as that with Shabo being a phenomenal guy and he's honestly one of the biggest impacts on our school. He's really not a supervisor in the weight room. He's more of, he's more of a friend and he's more of an icon to our school. He's helped, definitely helped our athletics and all the sports that everything goes on in our school. He's helped it be like, he's helped it be such a success and everything. And basically, Kellen, what Kellen has asked, answered most of my questions as well. I'm very glad that he's been giving that position back.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, just one thing. You know, with the last three, a couple of folks that get up here, I hope, it's coming across to me erroneously, that this committee has some animosity or something against Mr. Shabo. Believe me, that's far the, the truth. Don't, so I, I, I know you're here for Mr. Shabo, but there's nobody here in this, at least mine, against Mr. Shabo. If you get my, my saying, okay? So I just hope this thing's gonna work out for everybody and you go forward and, and-
Yeah, we believe that having the weight room after school is like the key to a good learning, to good learning. Being healthy, being in fit and everything is a main point in being, like getting a good education and everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And the last speaker?
We've got the last name, Jalat.
Jalat.
There we go. What's your first name?
Autumn.
Autumn, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm actually a reporter for the North Kingstown Current Wave. I have a few questions. So one of the things is, I'm very glad to see that Shabo's position has been reinstated. I think it's a very beneficial program. I've utilized it myself after track practice. But something that has come up, and I know it's been talked about, not here, but about the contracts in general, is retroactive pay. Shabo has, he's volunteered his time since the beginning of the school with students. I mean, he's dedicated, I think he documented baby students at one point coming in on one single occasion to the weight room. So is that going to be a part of this? Because I know that the contract agreement was to go with what was happening last year.
That's, that's actually, as you said yourself, it's-
That's, that's actually, as you said yourself, it's a contractual personnel issue, and, and, and that's not something that I can discuss publicly, contractual issues, personnel issues, but, Mrs. King, our business director is here tonight, and I know our superintendent is either watching this meeting now from Washington, or, or will be watching the tape, and, and I think those are issues that they will take into account, and they'll have those discussions with Dr. Kenworthy and, and Mr. Shabo, but that's, that's more of a personnel administrative function, and not something we can kind of get into discussing, individuals.
No, I understand.
Aren't they getting paid?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just add, and I don't want to get into what Mr. Serisi said, because he's correct, but, so, you bring up a point, though, about metrics, and, and I know you're taught to use evidence-based reasoning in your studies, and I, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but I will say, none of us have ever seen any metrics on how many students use the weight room. So, you know, if you're taught to use evidence-based reasoning to support your conclusions, it's pretty good practice that, to help us make decisions, is sometimes it's helpful to have data, so, just make that point, and we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That is the last speaker that we had signed up on our speaking, signing sheet this evening, and that concludes our agenda. I'd like to thank everyone for attending, and their questions and comments that they've presented to the committee. At this time, I'll ask for a motion from the committee to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries six to zero, we are adjourned.